Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to call the special meeting to order. Chris, are we in for please of the Freedom of Information Act?
Yes, sir, we are.
Thank you very much. Could you do the roll call now?
Certainly, sir. Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Hawkins?
He's here.
Okay, Mr. Ames?
Here.
Mrs. Bepper?
Here.
Mr. Lennox?
He's here.
Mr. Stanford?
Here.
And Mayor McCann?
Here.
All present, sir.
Can you please join me in a pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I can talk to consideration and refine local concept and project enhancements for the William Hilton corridor. Brian will do the presentation today. Mark will kick it off, but before Mark kicks you off, I say that I remind you at the end of this meeting, we will have a vote, up or down. That's the one that take this presentation as it is and allow Mark to carry it forward both to the county and any other party involved. So we will be involved at the end of the meeting. I appreciate that. Mark?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, members of the community. Happy to be back with you to review our Gateway Corridor Plan as it stands today. With us on today's meeting, I believe, is Mr. Greenway, our County Administrator, and just want to say thank you to Eric for being available and for his direction and support on this important project here on our island. Also included today, we'll know that HDR and MKSK are on the call. And as we review project details and recommendations, it's important to know that I, along with Mayor Sean, Mr. Greenway, will be meeting with DOT, South Carolina Department of Transportation later this week. Not for a final answer, not for a final decision on the project, but but really to let the Department of Transportation know what the collective thoughts are and where the remaining concerns still lie on this very, very significant project. I'll ask Sean, as he always does, great leadership. I just want to say thank you to Sean for your steady leadership in this project, your ability to listen and your ability to communicate those concerns. So I do think it's very important to acknowledge how hard and how much you are helping this project move forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Sean.
Thank you, Mark, Mayor, and Town Council for the opportunity to be back in front of you again today to share recommendations on the local preferred position for the Gateway Corridor Project. I'm Sean Cole, Senior Advisor, the Town Manager. I'm going to provide you a brief summary of project activity and outline the expectation for today's meeting. First, we've engaged consultants MKSK and HDR with corridor planning and transportation engineering expertise over the past several months to conduct a fundamental review to understand the SCDOT environmental assessment and to develop recommendations for a local preferred position to provide to project partners, including the state and the county. The team has looked at assumptions, data, roadway planning, and land disruptions proposed by SCDOT, including network impacts beyond the intersection of William Milton Parkway and Spanish Wells Road and the corridor project limits as proposed by SCDOT. These recommendations used to define the local preferred position have been developed and offered in a manner that maintains the project's integrity and operational goals, and then more effectively satisfies those goals with needs, interests, and concerns of the local community. Today, we are asking Town Council to review and obtain consensus on the recommendations and local position to share with the state and the county leadership for incorporation into the project. If there are other items that you would like to see considered as part of these recommendations, I respectfully request that you share them during today's discussion. We have a full team, including Brian Kinselman, Brad Strater, and Barrett Armstrong from MKSK, as well as Philip Hutcherson and Graham Malone from HDR on with us to go over today's presentation. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Brian Kinselman, who you all know, to lead us through that discussion.
Thank you, Sean. Good afternoon, Council members, Mayor, Town Manager, County Administrator. It's good to be in front of you again. I wish I were there in person, but alas, this too shall pass, I trust. I'm going to share my screen here and jump right in. Can everyone see that?
Brian, and this is Glenn. Can I ask you a question before you get started?
Of course you can.
When would you like to have questions on the individual segments about this, during your presentation or after?
Councilman, I think after, if that's if that's convenient to you all, relative to this presentation, this is a bit of an abbreviated version of what we reviewed two or three weeks ago, three or four weeks ago, with some emphasis on certain items towards the end of this presentation. So I think when we get to the, towards the end of this presentation, I would ask if you have minor comments, go ahead and chime in. Otherwise, this precursor segment is, dare I say, things you've already seen heretofore.
Fine, thank you.
I also have my colleagues, as as Sean had suggested, on the line with me. So any technical issues relative to traffic and transportation, Brad and Phil and colleagues are available for that. I'm going to serve as MC and try to move through this with pace, not dangerously so. But I think everybody on this call and the public has seen most of this before. But I do want to concentrate specifically towards the end of the presentation on areas that we've put more detail study to. With that, shall I begin, Sean?
Yeah, Brian, please start moving through.
Folks, this is our recommendations, that being HDR and MKSK are recommendations thus far on on the parkway. Again, it is a largely a reiteration in many cases of of what you've seen before. If I could get the slides to advance, that would be great. There we go. Again, the objective of our involvement has been to bring local knowledge to create something that is community-based, that is Hilton Head Island-specific, to enhance the DOT's preferred alternative, to enhance the DOT's preferred alternative. Bears repeating. And I think we've been very successful in garnering community input. We've had a lot of folks on the island very passionate about this project, and they've shared their time freely, and we appreciate that. Again, we're here to evaluate the DOT preferred alternative, recommend enhancements to create a real gateway to the island and improve the quality of life, specifically through the community through which this corridor passes most directly, Stony Neighborhood and Jenkins specifically. So again, DOT's goal was to fix transportation issues. We've got utility infrastructure that is reaching its capacity by all of the forecasts that we've been able to assess from DOT and from from other sources, but also to think about the quality of life issues that this new project would affect and also create a true gateway from the mainland onto the island that is something different than a national highway or an interstate quality expressway. As we've suggested before, we've broken this down into four segments, starting at the west with Moss Creek to the Bridges segment, that that flies over Mackey and Skull Creek, getting on to Terra Firma at Jenkins Island, and then into the Stony Neighborhood up to the Cross Island. So I'll go through these in geographic and left-to-right form. Corridor-wide, we're suggesting that the lanes be reduced to 11 feet, calm traffic, eliminate or reduce property impacts, eliminate raised curbs in the islands, use them as we do elsewhere on the island for drainage and for vegetation, vary the median width to create more of an aesthetic appeal to the parkway and to calm traffic, take advantage of significant town-owned property for that sake, deal with smart signal technology throughout as this comes to fruition as built infrastructure, reduce all the curb cuts and intersections and access points to the extent possible to make for safer through access on the parkway, provide trails and interconnectivity on both sides of the parkway and to, in fact, have a comprehensive system of safe and comfortable shared use paths. That is, that is not a passing trend. That is a legitimate transportation methodology. Encourage and open views to the water. The water is our signature. From my point of view, I think all of us would share that. We owe it to showcase that on the one hand and protect its environmental quality on the other. That can be done with careful consideration. Item 10 suggests that this is worth the beginning of a design process. I hope that doesn't distress many, but we're dealing with alignments of roadway. We're looking at a few years' worth of final design and construction documentation. And through that process, there is an awful lot of detailed design that needs to be brought to bear to this construction project, including signage and landscaping, public art, and the architecture of the place, any iconic features, something that is truly going to set a personality for this gateway onto the island that is something very unique to Hilton Head, South Carolina. Across the board, we're suggesting a reduction in design speed and also the posted speed through the corridor. Those are two different numbers, but obviously they're interrelated from an engineering standpoint. And then to, as Town Staff very wisely does on an ongoing basis, continue to look at the island-wide transportation system. We don't want to just push a transportation or a traffic problem further downstream. And Darren does a magnificent job on a daily basis of understanding intersections and corridor throughput and the like. And it goes without saying that he would continue to do that. But we're an integrated system from top to bottom, and we today are talking about one segment and one segment only, but it needs to be considered in larger context. Now to Moss Creek. Again, this is somewhat abbreviated. We're suggesting that we encourage, from a town standpoint, improvements to the commercial development that is at Moss Creek. It is our de facto gateway onto the, onto the island from the mainland. Our gateway experience really starts as a threshold as you pass below the Bluffton Bypass, moving eastbound. That's really where you get the eureka moment of of the open water, the Mackey Creek, and the island beyond. And as I've said before, that's really our icon. That's our our brand, and we need to encourage that and make sure that we don't, that we're always improving that with everything we do in terms of roadway, bridge, landscape, signage, and the like. But that's really where the experience begins. This suggests that Forting Road is redirected. There's an opportunity for redevelopment in what is now a service station on the south side at the at the flyover bridges. There's commercial infill opportunities that services really everybody, mainland and island community, but also creates a a more attractive entryway onto the island. This suggests that we remove an intersection that is at the service station underneath the the flyover bridges at Forting Island and reroute that access, that necessary access to Forting Island Road, but to do it in such a way that it doesn't add another intersection or access point to the parkway. Onto the bridges. We are recommending at this juncture that we have reduced mass of the bridge deck by recommending two separate bridges and a shared use path on the south side of the eastbound bridge. Reduce those bridge lanes to 11 feet. Reduce the shoulder on one side of the each bridge and have only one breakdown width shoulder on each of those bridges versus two, which is part of the DOT recommendation. Still allows for safe travel, safe passage, and a place for someone with a flat tire or law enforcement should they pull someone over on the bridge to get out of moving lanes of traffic. Provide for 14-foot-wide non-motorized lane with viewing areas. Again, you've seen that recommendation from us in the past to take advantage of these magnificent water views. I contend that this travel lane, this non-motorized travel lane and its viewing opportunities will be extremely popular. We've heard some comments that, hey, you know, will people really ride their bike from hither to yon? Well, they will if we give them an opportunity and a device upon which they can ride their bike or or take a run or rollerblade or walk. So I think that's going to be a tremendous asset to the island and to the mainland. And then in final design, to pay attention to bridge design, and that is how the bridge is viewed from afar, its form and its structure, but also parapets, railings, lighting, structural forms, all needs to be paid attention to moving forward. So this is our key recommendations, and that is to widen and improve that multi-use trail, have two separate bridges, reduce the quote-unquote breakdown lane to one side, and just reduce the mass of concrete that flies over the water. That doesn't even necessarily speak to the ultimate design of the bridges. But in concept, this is a reduction of impact, visual impact. Once those bridges hit Terra Firma at Jenkins Island, we're proposing that we consolidate all Jenkins Island access to one intersection at Heinrich Circle and at the Windmill Harbor entrance. We're proposing, as does DOT, that that is a signalized intersection, and I'll come back to that. That was an issue that was raised in our press past presentation, and we've taken another look at an option to that. So stay tuned. Also, this gives us an opportunity with additional geography to truly create parkway treatment with increased median width and undulation of the roadway and enhanced landscape, and taking advantage of the existing tree cover that we have on the north side of of the current parkway through Jenkins. So what that looks like is the removal of the access point for Jenkins Road and tying it into Heinrich Circle. Obviously, aligning those intersections with, that intersection with that south into Windmill Harbor to a signalized intersection, undulating the lanes, moving the trail onto some found ground, if you will, town-owned on the north and toward Windmill Harbor on the south, so that we have a more pleasant experience for the trail system. In plan view, you can see how this suggests a trailhead opportunity for our bikes and pedestrians. We are proposing not to have crosswalks at this signalized intersection, and you can see that there is underbridge access for the multi-use trail and then access onto the bridge deck as it passes over onto the mainland. You'll also see in red, that is the current bridges as we see them today, and the new bridges will be built to the south so that those existing bridges can continue to move traffic during construction. And also the undulation of the median and the true parkway feel. So less access points and interruptions of through traffic here. That intersection in detail, again, the red lines suggest where the existing alignment of the parkway is. We're suggesting, since the town owns the ground to the north, to move that corridor to the north so that we have more separation against windmill and are able to bring some of the mature vegetation of the town-owned ground into the median and have more of a robust landscape. Moving into the Stony Neighborhood across the Causeway, all the way to the Cross Island, we're recommending that we provide traditional left-turn motions at the intersections. We are suggesting we eliminate what we feel is a confusing DOT recommendation of the U-turn to the jug handles, as some people call them, and leave it to intuitive and understandable left-turn motions. We're also suggesting that we eliminate the through traffic onto Old Wild Horse. Presently, as you'll recall, there's only westbound traffic that can access onto Old Wild Horse. We're suggesting against having two-lane, one-way traffic and additional traffic volumes introduced to Old Wild Horse. So we're suggesting to leave Old Wild Horse as you see it today. It is a neighborhood street through one of our most sensitive neighborhoods on the island. Create a new park south of the parkway. We have largely town-owned ground, everything to the south to the water. We've got some privately-held parcels there as well. But this is our opportunity to truly showcase the Gulligichi culture, history, heritage in a legitimate park, possibly with a visitor's center, so that our guests and our tourists coming on the island can have a place of respite as they get onto the island, into the town, and take advantage of that cultural offering. Might be limited retail, certainly could be placed for restrooms and directions and information gathering for those coming to the island, but do it in authentic fashion and take advantage of what we have with these magnificent water views. Additionally, this is a policy thing, not a planning thing. We think there's a great opportunity for a Stony authored vision plan for that entire neighborhood, that entire community. There's tremendous opportunity in Stony. The folks that live there and have lived there for generations understand that. We think it's, it is time to to assist in creating that vision for what it looks like in the future and allow those folks, those property owners, to take advantage of those opportunities. And to do that, create a professionally-staffed development corporation that is the administrative vehicle for that advancement. That can be taken to other areas on the island, but I personally and my colleagues have had experience with the establishment of not-for-profit development corporations, and they're a wonderful vehicle by which we can advance development that may be more difficult, if not impossible, for government to do and outside the scope of what an individual can do. So again, those are policy suggestions. We've given that to you free of charge. That's outside the design of the corridor. Now, to Stony specifically, we're suggesting again to reduce lanes to 11 feet, to reduce the impact on the property takes and also to calm traffic, increase the buffers between the sidewalks and the trail and the roadway, consolidate driveways and curb cuts and access points where we can. That is going to only enhance the throughput of the roadway. You can see that this diagram suggests a few feet of savings over what the DOT has suggested, and this even includes enhanced curb-side planting areas to separate walks and trails. Again, we're looking to be as judicious as possible with the property that needs to be taken to make this corridor and three lanes of moving traffic through this tight spot in Stony. The Squire Pope intersection, we're suggesting, as opposed to the jug handle, the U-turn motions that was suggested, that we have two left-turn motions in the parkway eastbound direction onto Squire Pope for use by Stony residents, businesses, and Stony and Hilton Head Plantation Gate. This also suggests, as previously mentioned, that we're, we do not put in a new traffic signal at Old Wild Horse. We do not introduce to one-way traffic, two lanes into the neighborhood on Old Wild Horse, but we keep the median and enhance it to divert traffic to either Squire Pope or to Wild Horse. But we are suggesting a right-turn lane in the westbound direction so that we can move traffic more efficiently through the corridor. Spanish Wells and Old Wild Horse. Again, we are suggesting that we keep the left-turn motions, but enhance with some additional pavement at the edges, this intersection. So again, we have intuitive turning motions and not the jug handle U-turn proposal put forth by DOT. Also, we're suggesting that there is trail connection to to the park to our, to our east. So Stony, in a, in a plan view, suggests that there is multitrail, there's multi-use trail access virtually everywhere. You can see the parkland on the south side of the, of the parkway with great water views, public access, and also a connection of Chamberlain to Spanish Wells. They also show in a dash line a potential road connection between Squire Pope and Old Wild Horse. That is diagrammatic at this juncture. There's a fair amount of privately-held and town-owned ground within that area, and that will have to be knitted through that property ownership as sensitively as possible. But we think that would help all traffic movement start to finish. Now, so that's, that's really a summary, folks, of largely what you have seen before. Again, there were a few key issues that were brought to our attention that we felt needed more explanation. I'm going to allow my colleague Phil and Brad to chime in if I misspeak. The first issue was the future growth projections. This diagram shows the traffic, the traffic volume increase over the course of the last or the course of 10 years, 2009 through 2019. So it is steadily going up. I think that it is a truism that the town has within its power through zoning and land use planning and transportation systems elsewhere to positively affect an increase in traffic volumes. But I think it is also a truism that traffic volumes will increase, and it isn't just an island issue. It isn't just what's happening on the islands, everything that's happening in Bluffton and Hardyville and the vast development that's happening there that's putting pressure on our island. Our residents going to Bluffton or going to Hardyville or going to the corridor to do their shopping and their dining. It isn't just increased tourist traffic, though I think it's, it's a combination of all of those. So this, the traffic model suggests 1.19 annual growth in trips. Our colleagues at HDR have looked at the regional traffic model, which was recalibrated just a few years ago based on historic information and found that its projections were accurate relative to historic truth. This also suggests that there's there's a, with no improvements, will reach a level of service of F come 2025, and that's probably close to a construction delivery date for this parkway if it moves forward. So we're suggesting that, based on what HDR has been able to discern in investigating DOT's projections and recommendations and assumptions that three lanes in each direction is necessary to move traffic in the future. So we felt important to go back and revisit those assumptions with some science, as they say. If I could get this to advance. Bear with me, folks. There we go. The second issue was new bridge construction versus rehabilitated bridges. And I think a legitimate notion was hatched that hey, let's, let's uh replace the bad bridge and let's keep the bridges that are still good. And let's do that in, as we've shown in these sections above. By keeping the existing bridges to the north and let's rebuild uh eastbound bridges to the south. That provides redundancy of emergency evacuation, which is a good thing. It potentially is a savings of twenty to forty million dollars on just the bridge construction itself. It would leave in place bridges that have a limited lifespan versus that which would be new. That's pretty obvious and logical, right? But it would leave us with thirty to thirty-five years of useful life on those existing bridges. But even the existing bridges need to be modified. They need to be uh structurally enhanced for seismic requirements. Uh, the Skull Creek Bridge uh height approaching uh Pinkney requires uh some wetlands, additional wetlands impact. Uh, with these bridges to remain. Four lanes of traffic open during construction is going to add to the. Uh, the 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 life of the construction period. It is likely by result going to add to the project cost. So what may be a savings of twenty to forty million dollars. On the left side may begin to be eaten away by an increase in uh added construction um period. So as a result of that deep dive, we continue to think that three lanes in each direction, but on two separate structures. Is the most reasonable approach. Quality bridge architecture, improve the pedestrian experience. And minimize lane width. So these are as uh modest uh raised construction as is possible. Third is the Windmill Harbor intersection. I mentioned to you before that we have after analysis concurred with DOT's. Suggestion that that be a signalized intersection. But it needs to be a signalized intersection that uses smart technology. Uh, but uh, the point was, what would that look like in a grade separated scenario? This suggests that if it were grade separated, think of it as the bridges coming over the open water. To be extended over the top of uh Heinrich Circle Drive and um. And then touching down to the east of that intersection. Uh, it would, it would give us unhindered flow. Uh, from east to west, uh, so and 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 west east for that matter. But it would require that we have exit ramps and entry ramps to adjudicate that grade to get down to uh Heinrich Circle elevation. Uh, it would improve safety. We wouldn't have uh an intersection, a signalized intersection. However, understand that at the bottom of each of those uh exit ramps, we've got, we've got stop signs, stop motions, turning motions. We've introduced more, one could argue more complexity to the um. Vehicle maneuvering that happens underneath the bridges and between the bridges, but no traffic signal. That's the, that's the benefit to that. It would improve corridor efficiency as you can imagine. People don't have to stop for a traffic light. Even though it is thought that with smart signal technology, that signal would be vastly green in the east-west dimension. Uh, throughout the day. So this, this geometry increases wetlands impact. Virtually uh the trees that you see between the um ramping system and the bridges connoted by those yellow lines. Would be denuded. It would be a clear cut. We're introducing the uh utility corridor to. Uh, vehicle operators moving east to west. That's something we've endeavored to keep. Uh, behind the 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 shelter of tree cover. Uh, it, I I think it adversely affects therefore the parkway character and the gateway experience. The fact that this grade separated uh structure would be a, would be in fact above grade. Uh, would be more noise disturbance to the windmill neighborhood uh by definition. It is also a significant cost increase because we've added hundreds of feet of uh of above grade. Uh, structure retaining walls, embankment to new bridges. So it is a, it is a cost. For sure. We continue to suggest that uh we consolidate all Jenkins Island access to this one intersection. We provide new smart signals. We provide at grade and intersection. You can see the geometry of the new bridge to the left coming on to Jenkins. We think the visibility is going to be greatly improved of that new intersection uh because of the longer curve. We also moved this corridor to the north and provides additional uh clearance and stacking for those coming out of Windmill Harbor. Vis a vis their gateway. So on to stony number four, is there anything we can do in stony to minimize that again? Reducing lanes eliminated the acceleration lane westbound from Squire Pope. Uh, which was eating into privately held ground. Uh, optimize curbless medians wherever it is possible. To diminish the speedway effect of curbed roadways on both sides. Uh, legitimate trail system and reduce the speed, the posted and the design speed as well. So some have asked, you know, what does, what do our, uh, what do the uh preferred alternative community uh alternatives suggest? Relative to tr- traditional cultural property take, which is extremely sensitive and a real issue. Uh, not just in the stony neighborhood, but we're talking about stony here. Uh, this suggests that um. Uh, DOT had wider lanes and an acceleration lane and improvements to old wild horse. You can see. Their property takes uh in general terms in orange. Again, not to mention what uh that may do to the old wild horse. Uh, property owners and community. There are improvements that would uh have to happen in that area. Our our preferred local preferred option uh. Who suggests that we have to improve northbound Squire Pope because we're having two. Lanes uh turning left and that they need to have um accepting lanes. But uh, all things being equal, what is in green, which is the impact of the. Uh, local preferred option is less TCP property take than the DOT alternative. We were hopeful and and pleasantly surprised at that outcome. So we've spent a fair amount of time uh talking to the some stony property owners and residents, rightfully so. No one is more impacted than those folks are by this project. We've had no fewer than ten meetings on site with uh some of the folks and families there. Uh, ten to fifteen phone calls. We've created options for uh to take the temperature of. Those local property owners to get their opinions and their preferences. But what we heard from uh all of those folks and some of the other public uh input was. Uh, we need to consider always emergency evacuation routes. Get it? Is there any place else we can reroute this roadway? We've all heard that for a few generations now. We keep widening. Uh, two seventy-eight, but are there other viable ways of getting on to and off of the island? Uh, can we, how can we avoid and minimize property impacts? We need to slow traffic down. There's a speedway through stony. And we need to reduce the noise. One could argue if you reduce the speed, you can reduce the noise. Uh, also, we, we need to maintain, i- if we have access roads for stony residents. So that we may eliminate their driveway curb cuts. You know, how are those maintained? Who builds those and how are those maintained? Uh, we've also heard from those residents, we don't want to change traffic patterns. We understand that our. Uh, driveway curb cuts directly to two seventy-eight to the parkway are limited. There's only one way you can go. Uh, but that's where they are and that's where we'd like them. So we've heard, we've heard various opinions. Uh, whether that be new access or leave our access where it is. Uh, and this speaks to my earlier comments about stony neighborhood as a whole, and that is. We need a plan for the next twenty-five to fifty years that lives somewhat outside this uh corridor, but certainly needs to. Uh, include uh and accommodate corridor enhancements. But this is the impetus to start to think about what stony can be on into the future as opposed to just. Uh, us trying to figure out how we can touch as lightly as possible. The stony uh property owners and residents. Uh, are keen on their economic development opportunities. They want safe home sites, uh, not too much to ask, right? Uh, they want to celebrate their culture. Uh, I get that. I think that this, as I've said before, the Gallegi Chi culture and heritage. Is important to all of the island. It's important to our brand. It isn't, it shouldn't be just important to those that live in stony. So um, one man's opinion, I I personally don't disagree with any of these, but we wanted to. Uh, demonstrate to council and to others that we heard and read every comment made to us relative to the stony neighborhood. So that being said, uh, our recommendations are hearing people uh and taking them at their word. In the short term and to limit any disruption to the residents, uh, let's provide for. Their direct driveway accesses on to the parkway. Long term, I think there's a, I I think it's a safer route for both those on the north and the south side of the parkway. For uh separate private driveway access to Squire Pope on the north and Chamberlain on the south. That would allow those curb cuts to be removed, those driveway cuts. And would allow for a more robust landscape treatment along the street. To screen not only views, but also the noise. Median planting within this stretch uh through stony, I think it's going to be important just to minimize the amount of pavement. That these folks uh see on a daily basis. Provide for this marsh front park that celebrates the culture of the community. Uh, and 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 reduce the design speed uh in in the, in the posted speed. So we show the private drive accesses uh on the, on the right. That would be new driveway construction. On the left, that suggests uh uh curb cuts out to the parkway as exists today. Number seven is stony performance. So we're, as we've said, we're suggesting a different configuration to intersections. We felt it was important to look at the travel times. Um, we can, we, we will speak to level of service, but travel times is really what we all experience as we drive. Either and gone through this corridor. Uh, so this is DOT's recommendations for the uh eastbound. Uh, U turn back to Squire Pope and westbound U turn back to Spanish Wells. And those are AM and PM travel times in seconds. Don't try to read this arithmetic. It's tough on your eyes. But what it does, what this suggests is given uh the proposals for the local preferred scheme is a dual left turn at Squire Pope. No signal at uh old wild horse. Again, uh, taking those turning motions away. And allowing Spanish Wells and uh wild horse to perform only more efficiently than it does today. What this suggests is a matter of seconds of difference, one scheme to the other. A matter of seconds, you'll see on this chart, uh, the top line is. Eastbound and then westbound uh travel minutes without improvements. It's what you see today, taking the eastbound where seventeen. Uh, minutes through that corridor from the causeway to the cross island. The DOT preferred alternative is uh eight point nine minutes. And our preferred local concept is nine point four minutes, an additional thirty seconds. The westbound peak is twenty-four seconds unimproved. And the DOT preferred is nine, I'm sorry, twenty, twenty-two point four minutes uh in the, in the westbound. Uh, the preferred, the DOT preferred alternative is nine point nine minutes. And our preferred local is ten point five. So we're at uh, we're at forty more seconds. Uh, but what we see as positives there are uh no increased traffic on old wild horse. Uh, the elimination of an additional traffic signal as was suggested by DOT. And all of these uh local preferred concepts. Still meet the town's adopted standards of level of performance. So it's not like we're sacrificing level of performance. We're introducing more intuitive motions. Uh, and minimizing uh property interruption through through stony for the whole configuration. So uh, the 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 difference between the U turn at old wild horse, the dual lefts at um. Squire Pope are essentially identical. What we gain from that is not having to navigate another traffic signal and a U turn. And then a right turn on to northbound Squire Pope. Again, we think this is more intuitive. So essentially, the recommendation suggests in this analysis done by HDR, so there's no significant travel time. Difference between the DOT alternative and the local concept. Uh, this allows for left turns to continue to happen in stony. Uh, at, at the intersections with no uh time of day restrictions. Dual left turn at Squire Pope, current configuration at uh old, old wild horse and Spanish Wells, wild horse. Has some modest improvements to make those turning motions more uh civilized. Another issue brought to our attention is, are we just kicking the can down the road? So if we improve this segment of the. Corridor, what happens downstream as you move eastbound? This suggests that the cross island um has impact with, certainly with the removal of the toll. On Seapine Circle and Point Comfort Road. And in the not too distant future, we're going to be at a level of service F. Uh, and that's, uh, doesn't, isn't impacted one way or the other, quite frankly, with this section of corridor. And as I mentioned earlier, town staff is looking at all of these intersections and corridors on a daily basis. Because it's all one integrated transportation system. So these intersections appear to be five to ten years away from reaching their capacity. Any of us that drive through these intersections on a daily basis and have for years can understand that. Uh, so that uh point comfort will be a level uh, level of service F. Can be mitigated by adding a westbound right turn lane that does not exist there today. Uh, the DOT project, as I mentioned, isn't causing any considerable changes. Uh, and there's no uh discernible downstream impacts eastbound at Gumtree or Wilborn. From either of these alternatives, but both will improve the westbound performance at Gumtree and Wilborn by. Adding more capacity and having less opportunity for traffic backup. So the recommendation is regardless of alternative, it won't change the downstream performance of uh, of the, of the business route and. The uh intersections on the south of the island are moving towards distressed fashion one way or the other. So again, to reiterate, uh, these recommendations, I won't reiterate these recommendations. You had those uh. Uh, previously, but what we, we continue to, uh, I I guess validate. The recommendations we had made a few weeks ago, nothing that we have explored that has changed uh our, our direction heretofore. Two things that I think uh need to be considered strongly is item ten. That we can't take our eye off the, off the ball as this project moves into final design. Uh, and we have to constantly, uh, number twelve, evaluate the island wide transportation system. Again, staff is on that, but it is something that constantly needs to be monitored. Uh, the zone specific, uh, just to summarize what you saw at the front end of this Moss Creek improvements, start the gateway experience there. Reduce the mass and the width of the bridges, uh, consolidate Jenkins Island access. Consolidate Jenkins Island access. Intuitive turning motions through Stony. Minimize the Stony impact, Old Wild Horse traffic involvement. New park south of the parkway. Consider a visitor center and those policy statements previously mentioned. The next steps moving forward is for you fine folks to discuss and certainly ask some questions following this. Happy to answer those along with my colleagues. And vote on those recommendations or not, as the, as the mayor had suggested. And then discussions with county and state on a preferred position and then continued coordination. Again, this isn't the end of the process. This is probably the end of the beginning of the process. So there's a lot more design and planning that has to be done, but with that, I will be happy to answer any questions and direct answers to the appropriate party. And I apologize for that dragging on as long as it did.
Thank you, Brian. Before we go to questions, I, I want to thank Eric Greenway, Chris for being on the call today. And I want to thank Eric Greenway for being a true partner to the town in getting this all done. We couldn't get as far as we were today without Eric. And Eric, I thank you very much for your done, help us along. With that, questions from the council? We'll start with Mr. Brown.
Mr. Mayor, are we going to have a public comment?
We're going to have, we're going to have appearance by citizens. They have to comment from the council, yes.
Okay, so we'll, we'll have a chance to, to respond after we have public comment?
No, would you rather have pure by citizens before you respond?
Well, at least I, I, I'm speaking for me. I, I'd like to hold my questions and comments until I hear from the public.
Let's skip right over to appearance by citizens then.
Thank you.
I would like to remind our citizens of the town, the rules and procedures for public comment. Once called upon to speak, please state your name. For the record, you will have three minutes to address the council. At the end of your three minutes, you will be required to conclude your remarks. While you are speaking, I ask that you maintain decor suitable to the meeting and refrain from using any profanity, abusive or obscene language. Chris, do we have citizens?
Yes, sir. Today we have three citizens who have signed up to speak at today's meeting. Citizens sat until one PM this afternoon today to sign up to address, address you and the council during today's meeting. Citizens could also submit their comments in writing to the town's open town hall portal, which will be made part of the public record. With that, sir, the first citizen I call up is Patsy Price.
I'm sorry, Krista, we have Tom Sharp on the line.
It's Mr. Sharp. I apologize.
Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead, sir. Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm here. Can I start?
Yes, sir. Please go ahead.
All right. Thank you. My name is Tom Sharp. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm very encouraged by some of the refinement of the work that's been done. There's some good pieces in there. I'm still a little disappointed that I guess the objective of this money we're spending is to enhance DOT's preferred alternative. There is an option totally missing in evaluation, actually recommended by HDR. And that is to put an overpass in the Stony area. I think the twelve recommendations are rather evasive. They're a general wish list and they tend to defocus some of the main issue. And what is the main issue? I think the design is very unsafe. Intersections are not safe. Two things that we need to use some data on, ten percent of the accidents, injuries and deaths are in this half-mile section of, of the, of the whole island are in that Stony area with two intersections. I'm glad to see that one intersection was taken out. So I'm very concerned about safety, curb cuts. And I'm sorry that our transportation engineers have missed the fact that ninety percent of the traffic is through traffic from Moss Creek to the Cross Island. It does not need to be interrupted on its travel. You're just introducing conflict points to those motors. That is not good. We haven't served the principal transportation need. Congestion, concerned about that. I'd like to see a level of service calculation. A little concerned about times and signals. So I'd like to see that. That I think is missing. So I think there may be a problem with this enhanced design as you still haven't hit safety. We don't talk about it much. I didn't see any of that in the presentation. Brian made some comments along the way. And level of service. So those are my comments. I believe we seriously should be looking at an engineering design and evaluation of an overpass in Stony area. The land owns, the town owns land on the three areas on both sides of the highway. Put your parallel roads in that Brian's talking about towards the end. We add value for safety and business development. And last point, I think the Windmill Harbor intersection should be put under the bridge. It doesn't have to be moved to the east. You have elevation under a bridge structure to the west. And that should be considered. That would reduce the cost. So thank you very much. Those are my quick comments. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Our next, our next citizen here is Patsy Price.
Thank you.
Miss, Miss Price.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead with your comments. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. I did give my presentation. I don't know what happened to it. But I will start again. I'm happy to do that. Can you hear me, Krista?
Yes, ma'am. Please go ahead.
Okay. Sorry, I'll try it again. First of all, thank you to the town council for giving the public opportunity to speak about this presentation. But secondly, we point out that there was no staff report and no presentation materials available on the town's website prior to this meeting. So the Coalition of Island Neighbors is not able to provide analysis of any report or presentation prior to this meeting. For that reason, we recommend that the town council provide adequate time and opportunity for the community to comment on this presentation today and on the comments of the town council. And also time to look at any other materials the town council has considered prior to this special meeting. Until that occurs, we incorporate by reference our previous comments on the SC DOT recommended preferred alternative, which is based on a flawed traffic model and which has been rejected as a complete failure by the community. We also incorporate by reference our previous comments on the last presentation by MKSK. With regard to the presentation today, because there's some new elements, it's difficult to respond immediately, but would point out the following. We're greatly disappointed and dismayed and extraordinarily concerned that MKSK and HDR continue to use the LAPS model with the accelerated growth pattern that SC DOT adopted. The LAPS model was a flawed model and the accelerated growth pattern has not yet been proven without reliance upon the flawed model. We have not heard anything about the Traffic Engineers Report from Coastal Conservation League. Many others have also pointed out the failure of the traffic model. So we urge there to be consideration of different traffic models. In addition, four-lane option has not been considered. There's still a failure to include a cross on a parkway connector. There's been no consideration of the coalition-based alternative, which we presented before. And there's still a failure to produce end-to-end performance metrics and updated cost estimates. This project is a once-in-a-lifetime project and will impact Hilton Head Island for decades to come. A decision of this magnitude must not be based on a flawed traffic model, inaccurate assumptions, disrespect the historic Gullik community of Stony, and complete data, lack of end-to-end performance metrics and limited cost estimates. Pursuit of excellence demands a higher level of performance and the community is still calling for that to be delivered. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Price. And lastly, we have Jessie White. Ms. White?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor McCann and members of town council. Jessie White on behalf of the Coastal Conservation League. The US-278 corridor project is at a really critical juncture right now. SC DOT has put forward a plan that involves constructing a brand-new single-span bridge, widening the roadway from four to six lanes, confusing U-turns at major intersections and insufficient community mitigation. We have many concerns with this plan, but most significantly is the fact that SC DOT's plan will not achieve the project purpose of, quote, "reducing congestion along US-278 corridor from Moss Creek Drive to Spanish Wells Road." We know this because our experts' analysis of traffic data coming onto and off of the island identified points of congestion that are located outside of DOT's study area. Without addressing congestion points further to the east and west of the study area, congestion will not decrease in a significant way, even with broad widening. Improvements of the William Hilton Parkway Corridor are squarely within the town's jurisdiction and they require your consent and approval. We urge you to join together and be united in insisting that the project scope be broadened and that SC DOT assess the entire corridor at a minimum connecting to the Cross Island Parkway in order to make sure that the solution put forward actually addresses the underlying congestion problem. At a minimum, we urge you to unanimously insist that MKSK, MKSK's recommendations be incorporated into the final project design and that more meaningful community mitigation be provided. Thank you.
Again, Krista?
Oh, thank you, Ms. White. Sir, that concludes appearance by citizens.
Before we go back to the council, I'd like to ask Eric Greenway, if you'd like to say a couple of words. Eric, if he's here, if he was.
He was. I don't see him.
Okay, we'll come back to Eric.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm here. Sorry, Mayor, I was trying to get the video camera on. So yeah, I appreciate the, appreciate the opportunity to address you all this afternoon. Appreciate the comments from MKSK, the work that has been done on this important corridor project and the bridge construction out there. The county stands ready to work with the town of Hilton Head Island, and of course, we always are ready to work with our partner, who is the lead project, lead on the project here. South Carolina DOT and KCI with the design and enhancements that are necessary in order to bring this project into fruition so that it's a, an enhancement to Hilton Head Island, to Southern Beaufort County. And whatever we can do to work with the town on the design where it makes sense and is appropriate, then we stand ready to do that with you all. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you, Mark. Appreciate the opportunity that we have and the relationship that we have to work with each other on things. And thank you, town council, for allowing me to address you this afternoon.
Thank you for your leadership. We appreciate it. Okay, let's go back to the council now. Mr. Brown.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'm unmuted. Is that me okay? Okay, all right. I've, I've got, I guess, a few questions. Just bear with me. And is, is Darren Shoemaker still on the line with us?
Darren? Yes, Darren's on the call.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Yeah, I got a, I got a couple of expert questions. Darren, afternoon, first of all.
Good afternoon, Councilman Brown.
What, Darren, what year was the Cross Island Parkway bill? This roundabout will be fine.
It was constructed in the mid-nineties and it opened very early, first week of nineteen ninety-eight.
Okay. This is not the, the first transportation conversation we've had as a community. And I know you've been here a long time. Appreciate your service, Mr. Shoemaker. I was looking back and there was a nineteen ninety-one Wilbur Smith Associate Transportation Update Plan. Does that ring a bell to you at all?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm just curious to know, Darren, because this was before my, my involvement. You know, at that point, I do remember that we would have traffic backups, particularly going off the island from the, the bridge almost through Chaplin down to Shelter Cove. And there was a need to increase capacity. I guess in your professional opinion, why choose to build a cross island to alleviate that versus widening from the bridge to Seapine Circle on the original two seventy-eight route?
I think that it was largely a matter of convenience to serve south end residents. The route to get off the island, particularly for emergency purposes, is, is much longer without the link that the Cross Island Parkway provides. And of course, the additional capacity that the Cross Island Parkway provides as a free-flowing facility without traffic lights on it was certainly recognized at the time as an invaluable tool to both improve circulation, not only between the mainland and the island, but also circulation on the island. And I think that virtually all would agree that that's been a very successful project.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. So in layman's terms, an alternate route through what was once a congested area was more appropriate and, as you mentioned, is deemed to be successful. Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. I needed, I needed that clarification. Next question. I guess this is for Brian or whoever he wants to, to give it to. I think slide number six maybe addressed the Stony comments. There were also comments that went to SC DOT during the public comment period. And we, as council, have been provided with those, like a hundred and seventy-five pages of it. Is, is there a summary of those comments anywhere?
Councilman, I, I have seen all those comments. I've read them. I don't know if there is a summary document. I think Sean may be able to address that, but they're extensive for, to be sure. Sean, has it been summarized?
Let me jump in here, Alex. We're waiting for DOT's response back to all those questions. I mean, the questions are only part of the question. The other part is the answers. So as soon as we get back the answers, we will sit down and look at them, both the questions and the answers. Right now, we do not have the answers at all.
Okay, yeah, I can, I can appreciate that. Thanks for that clarity, Mr. Mayor. I, I just, I, I feel as if those comments are very important. And that, that we as representatives, the town of Hilton Head, need to address those comments. I appreciate SC DOT is going to do their part, but I'm more interested in, in our part. And at this point, it may be difficult for us to say that what MKSK has put in front of us as far as recommendations addresses the public comment because we have not had the opportunity to see what that is summarized. But I'll react to it in, in, in just a moment here. As far as the, I guess, the improvement through the corridor, Brian, the, the chart indicates that there will be savings and minutes with the SC DOT alternative and also with, with your, with your organization is suggesting. And, and just slightly, I guess, more time with your more time with your suggestion. How much of that time would be, I guess, granted towards smart signalization? Was that factored in at all?
Philip, I'm going to defer to you and to Darren on, on that call. But, Councilman, I think the differential between in, in, in our arithmetic and Phil's arithmetic between the local preferred option and DOT option were fractions of minutes, not necessarily entire minutes. But I, I, I hear you. There is a slight differentiation, but not markedly so. But I'll let Phil answer your question more directly.
Sure, thank you, Councilman Brown, too. Graham, you can chime in as you, as you want on this one. He can land the traffic numbers on this. But I don't believe that we included the smart traffic design, and I don't think DOT had to. We're kind of comparing apples to apples on that. You probably would save some with a smart traffic design, but there is the vast majority of traffic is on 278, so those that, that traffic would probably get the most green time. We would get the vast majority of the green time. So there wouldn't be a huge amount of savings, but there might be some. But we were trying to compare apples to apples, so we, we did not include the smart signal in that. Can I answer your question?
Yeah, it does. I'm not necessarily, I guess, put in a, in a, in a better position with the answer, but yes, you did answer my question. And, and, and my last question, before I go into my, my comments here, Mr. Mayor, is one of the slides indicate, I think it was number eight, that the level of service at Seaplane Circle will be at Level F regardless, if we do something or nothing. Am I interpreting that correctly?
I think that's right, Councilman. Phil, do you have anything to add to that? Performance downstream.
That's right, yeah. Graham, you want to take that?
Yeah, hi. That, that is correct. Yeah, so the Seaplane Circle, just with general traffic growth and the additional traffic diverted from the removal of the toll on the Cross Island Parkway is creating that increase in level of service at the circle. It doesn't have anything to do with the, which option is selected on 278.
Okay, all right. So, so my comments. I, I want to first of all, thank, thank Mr. Greenway for, for being here. Absolutely. The county has, has played a significant part in, in this project thus far. And I, I, I was listening closely to some of Mr. Greenway's comments, one of which was, you know, us making changes within reason. That one's sticking with me a little bit. Any event. This is a SC DOT project. And my comments are going to be, as a representative of the citizens of Hilton Head, not an SC DOT employee. As I said on that SC DOT 278 committee conversations, it was brought to my attention by a very knowledgeable individual that SC DOT almost always, in a situation like this, pick the current route. And I commend Brian and his team for working very diligently in trying to accomplish meeting our guiding principles. But I have to say that I'm not sure that we gave Brian a fair shot because we didn't give him a clean piece of paper. We gave him a piece of paper that already had lines on it, and the decision, for all practical purposes, was already made without necessarily taking the input from our residents. And as we've seen, there's not going to be a significant in, increase in guiding principle number one, which is fixing the transportation issues. I left Hilton Head this morning about 8:30, and yes, there was a lot of traffic coming on the Hilton Head. It was backed up from the, the end of the bridge at Wimmo Harbor all the way to Tango Outlets. But on my way back at 10 o'clock, it was clear. So the, the, you know, the improvement of, you know, minutes here is not necessarily impressive to me. And based on the comments that I have gone through, that 175 pages, the community at large doesn't have a whole lot of appetite for what the SC DOT is putting in front of us. So again, that kind of gives Brian an unfair opportunity to meet the guiding principles. I understand this is a regional effort, but again, we're trying to protect and preserve our quality of life here on Hilton Head. So I see the bridge and the entranceway on the Hilton Head somewhat as an opportunity for us to control the situation. And I'll say that again, an opportunity for us to control the situation. I'm not going to run down what the issues come with increased capacity. We all know them very well. But we will have unintended consequences when it comes to increased capacity. So as far as today's vote is concerned, I will not be voting in favor of this, and here are the reasons why. I'll make sure this is captured. I'm not sure if anyone's taking notes, but I'm going to go slow to make sure that they're here. We are not taking consideration the implications outside of SC DOT's scope. And I understand that it's going to be a F at Seaplane Circle regardless, but I'm more concerned, not just with that intersection, but others on the island. That 1991 report that I mentioned earlier, that I suggest we all take a look at, tells us that there's need to improve side streets on Hilton Head to four lanes, i.e. Gumtree Road. This increased capacity coming on to Hilton Head with six lanes and faster travel time, so to speak, is going to affect Gumtree Road. And us not having that information in front of us to evaluate doesn't put us in a very good position to move forward. Going from a service level F through the corridor to a service level D begs the question, if it's a $300 million project, is there not a better way to spend that much money? While I'm on money, just simple math tells us that we don't have enough at the moment. And I'm not sure where the rest is coming from. So if we are truly protecting our citizens' best interest, a full understanding of the accounting, project, start to finish, even with these improvements and enhancements needs to be in front of us. Without that, I'm not sure that we're making a sound decision. And as far as where we are today and having conversations with the county and Secretary Hall, we have not established what I would deem as non-negotiables. And I understand this is the beginning of the conversation, but at the same time, we've already seen the secretary flex. And I appreciate Senator Davis for stepping in. But I also heard in that comment that we need to be prepared to see what it is that we want, not to walk in the door expecting them to cut off what we want. So those are my comments, Mr. Mayor, as to why I'm not prepared to support what's in front of us today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Hawkins?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good afternoon, all. The, if we bring ourselves back in time, the State Department of Transportation, with their professional team, working with us, came for, came forward with a, an approach. And did we embrace that approach at 100% level? The answer was no. Did we think it could be better? The answer was yes. Did we think we had the capability within our own ranks to do that? The answer was no. So what did we do? We reached out to some of the best and brightest in this field with the HDR firm and with the MKS firm. And we moved in a direction with, what I, as I recall, the full support of council to bring in another set of eyes to see how we could improve the situation. I believe that what has been presented to us by Brian today is representative of a process that, I believe, has demonstrated itself as inclusive. I believe it's been a process that has been characterized by social sensitivity. I believe that the, their suggestions in the stony area have, I think, merit, but maybe the stony people don't want it, and we're prepared to express, accept that. My understanding is the stony people still want to have curb cuts directly off the, leading to and from 278. I don't think that's a good idea, but I don't live there, and that's what they want. So we're trying to be very socially sensitive to that. The, the overpass, the overpass in that area, I think, could make a lot of sense. And in my conversations with engineering people that have worked on this project, there's quite a negative social impact, a community impact, because that type of overpass has a detrimental impact on the land in the, in the immediate area. By, by that, I mean, it's going to require the establishment of a wall that's going to eat up unnecessarily land that the stony people don't want to give up. So we decided to, to move on. I, I was very pleased to hear the sensitivity that's been expressed in terms of design, in terms of landscape activity, in terms of trying to beautify this as a parkway, not a thruway. So I also am very pleased to hear that this project is going to be looked at within the overall context of transportation for the entire island. That was highlighted in, in the presentation. I didn't see that in the last presentation. I'm delighted to see it here. I'm also very delighted, Mr. Greenway, for your participation as a leader with the county. We're part of the county. We're proud to be part of the county. And your willingness to work with us as we travel to the state with whatever recommendation we come up with. So I, I today feel very confident that my recommendation will be to, through the mayor, will be to recommend that our town manager meet with his counterpart, Mr. Greenway, discuss, and hopefully gather support for the proposal that's before us today and that they enjoy consideration from the State Department of Transportation as they travel to Columbia. I, I, I think in, in a negotiation, it, it needs to be respectful. It needs to be thoughtful. And I believe that's what it's going to be. And in my experience, that usually bodes well for the conclusion you're looking for. So those are my comments, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Ames?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I'd like to recognize Brian and his team, the efforts that they put into this. I have a much greater positive reaction to what is being proposed now than I did over a month ago, but I do have a couple of questions. When we talk about this, and I don't know who should answer this, maybe somebody on Brian's team, that this really doesn't materially improve congestion. And then connected to that, certain level of service F in 2025, is, is that really just related to the commuter times? Or is that level of service F pretty much all the sunlight hours?
Philip, I'm going to look to you, but while you're coming off of mute, David, that, that level F is the performance moving forward of the existing condition come 2025, which would be, I would hope, at the end of a construction period, when new, new accommodations would be made. But
but that's, is that level of service F during commuter travel? Or is it some other way of measuring level of service F that I don't understand?
Those are peak times, Philip, but I'll leave that to you.
Yeah, hi, hi, guys. I can answer this question. So the D level of service is measured in several ways. So, you know, what the DOT and the environmental document looks at are daily volume and looking at general daily traffic on a road and taking into consideration things like the number of signals, the number of lanes, the speed of the road. But there's also a peak hour component, too. So, you know, when they talk about designing to the peak hour or the hour of the commuter, you know, they're wanting to make sure that what's being built can handle routine, but elevated levels of traffic. And they're usually directional. So that's why, you know, when they're designing a road, they'll look at the AM and the PM peaks, because those tend to be the ones that are most directional. And then as you get towards the midday, they can be, you know, more, more of an even split. But what they looked at was both of those metrics are both of those levels. And, you know, we, we went back and reviewed their work in the EA, too. So, you know, wanted to make sure that what they were saying made sense. And, you know, the, the areas that you tend to see the levels of service F that are happening more quickly are the areas where there's currently four lanes. And so that's what they were concluding, and, and that makes sense because when you're looking at the levels of traffic that are happening daily, you're looking at around 56,000, 58,000, depending on, you know, maybe a little bit higher, depending on the month that you're looking at the, the daily traffic. But that's pretty close to the capacity of a four-lane road.
Yeah, I think you've answered my question adequately. So I guess if, if I were to accept a level of service F, then residents and employees and service vehicles would be challenged in ever-increasing amounts with congestion. That's the way I interpret that. You mentioned speed when you were describing the level of service. There was a comment made by the member of the public that said intersections are inherently unsafe. Is speed related to that equation? So if you have an intersection, you're going super fast, it's going to be more unsafe than if you're going slower?
Generally, speed is a factor. You know, the, the speed is more closely related to the severity of the crash, not necessarily the frequency.
Yeah, I think my point is that there's a recommendation to Yeah, I think my point is that there's a recommendation to slow the speed of the corridor, which in my mind might make those intersections safer. But I acknowledge whenever you have a turning movement, you have an issue. There's also another comment made about extending the study area. I have seen some, and that, some analysis that suggests that this effort will not improve things on 278 down by Matthews Drive, that there's congestion there and so on. The way I look at that is we, as a town, are going to have to be continually improving our roads to accommodate whatever traffic our land use plan is saying is okay. And that really underscores the importance of our getting our act together in terms of land use planning and rezoning. I, I have come to a preliminary point of view. I asked myself, is this project necessary? And based on the information that we are being provided, I think it is. Second question is SC DOT's design consistent with island character? And I say emphatically no. And so it, it comes down to whether or not we can be confident that the MKSK recommendations will be adopted by SC DOT. I don't think we have a, a level of confidence that that's going to happen. But I do think we have strong support in the legislature that, that leverage will be applied for our, our island's benefit. And I truly appreciate Senator Tom Davis's consistent advocacy and strong support and leadership in pushing the agenda that we're talking about today, if not even a broader sense. So I, I, I wonder what's missing. And I think the outline that MKSK has provided is very good. My, my personal priorities, I mean, I, I, I really think that we have to go into this negotiation saying, this is our list and this is what our citizens want. But for me, the high, highest level of need are separating the bridges, having an innovative quality design of the bridges, heavily landscaping the mediums and to the degree possible, the road edges, separating the roadway on Jenkins Island as it has been recommended, minimizing the lane widths, the leisure trails. But perhaps the one that I think might be the greatest attribute to our efforts would be creating a, and this was a policy recommendation, creating a nonprofit development corporation for the benefit of Stony as a community and at, as the broader community writ large. I think that that's, development corporation could master plan Stony. It could, the, we could say to SC DOT, we will establish that nonprofit corporation within the next eighteen months. And we want, and I'm making this a request that we add this to our agenda with the state SC DOT, a significant seeding of that nonprofit corporation. Councilman Brown and I have had conversations with Senator Tom Davis beginning over a year ago. And he believes this is a reasonable request, given the circumstances of Stony. And I would just add that if we do this, there's innovation and publicity that will be garnered from a successful effort to mitigate the, the impact of this traffic on that community far beyond a sign or a gazebo that was proposed by SC DOT. So with those comments, it boils down to our level of confidence that what is being proposed with MKSK will be adopted by SC DOT. If not, I'm adamantly opposed to SC DOT's plan because of scale, because of its own environmental impact, because of its poor gateway experience, and because of its impact on Stony. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Becker.
Thank you, Mayor. And also thank you to Brian and the entire MSKS team and HGR. And thank you, Mr. Greenway, for attending this meeting. I think it's important that you hear each of us as we think through where this project is and what our residents are thinking and what the future of Hilton Head will be like in the coming years, should this all take place the way it's being presented. Last time we gathered together, I went through some historical comments that had to do with the guiding principles and, and all the rest and answered for myself whether or not I thought, whether or not I thought that we had, where we were, had we achieved, were we failing? And today I just wanted to go back to the original adopted penny referendum ordinance from November of 2017 and go down and check out where we are with that. So the project name under two, section 2.3 for Hilton Head Island is the US 278 corridor traffic improvements. And the description was to repair and/or replace the existing spans of the bridges to Hilton Head Island and other improvements between Moss Creek Drive and Squire Pope Road at an estimated cost, capital cost of eighty thousand dollars. So, answer the question, are we, where are we with that? A long way away from it. We're talking about an ever-expanding, not scope of work necessarily, because we are still within those parameters, but development of work to try to make this project have a positive impact on our neighborhoods, on our residents, quality of life, our visitors, impressions of who we are. And when we look at that, have to think about the fact that there is a circulating petition that has, my understanding, now seven thousand or better signatures of folks who live here on Hilton Head Island. And those people are saying that this, as they've heard it, is not going in the direction that they want it to go in. In addition to that, there is, you'll see if you look in today's comments, a Port Royal survey that was done. And of those respondents, there is a seven to one ratio of folks who prefer that we stick with the bridges that we have and stay with what the original referendum intended to replace or repair. And that would be, if that continues, as it was reported, a ninety percent representation of that neighborhood area over in Port Royal. So those are significant. And then I, and then I'm sitting here. And as most people know, this virtual conversation for me doesn't feel much like a conversation. Listening intently to each other, but with no ability to talk to each other and have others who may have something that sparks an idea to really generate a debate and a thought-provoking opportunity to expand on what has been presented to us. Instead, we're reacting. I don't think that serves us or the residents or the visitors or the county, the state very well. We have a bigger responsibility for something that happens once in our lifetime, like this corridor is. So I find all of that pretty bothersome as we're sitting here. I find additionally bothersome that I'm not particularly comfortable with knowing what our next steps are. We're expressing an opinion about alternatives. And, you know, hate to bring it up again, but it all starts to sound really familiar that you have to pass it to find out not only what it's in it, but what it costs and what its impact will ultimately be. Also, not a really good plan of action for those of us who have to make decisions. So I don't think we're really in a place where we can expect that there's much confidence in what's going on, not only here, but with regard to every aspect of where we're heading. There are, I can't count how many times we've all said in a meeting like this or a meeting, other meetings, that we're not experts. And so we're relying on SC DOT as an expert. And we've hired, and we've collaborated with the county to hire experts. And we have people, as we know, we are so blessed and fortunate on this island, who are experts, who have really spent an awful lot of time, energy, and committed themselves to helping us get through this. I think that we are, I have a question that I think I need to get answered by anyone who wants to. On page forty, I think it's on there twice. Page six and maybe forty, number twelve. Evaluate the island-wide transportation system. I've heard reference to that meaning, the good work that Mr. Schumacher does and the town does with regard to signals and such. Is that what, is that all that we're talking about here? Or is there, what, what does that actually mean? Who, who can tell me what that means?
Councilwoman, this is Brian. I'll, I'll take a shot at that in my, in, in, in my opinion. I think we've all been distressed by this project from its inception that it has a distinct starting and ending point and the end of the world is at either end of those. It's, it's taken out of context. And, and we, we spoke to some of the potential downstream impacts of this, because DOT did not consider those downstream impacts. To, to the larger point, the town is, is constantly and will be taking a fresh look at land use planning and zoning ordinance, things that affect traffic generation, development on the island. That has to go hand in glove with a step-back, comprehensive look at all of our arterials, all of our intersections in the context of however this gateway corridor turns out through negotiations with DOT. And, and, and one of the gentlemen mentioned before the need for us to look at our, our local streets as well. And we're, we're putting on population, we're, development is happening, whether it's infill or new. We, we can't just wait till some traffic congestion issue rears its head and be reactive to it. So from a, from a city planner's standpoint, as the town looks at land use planning and policy, we need to look with equal measure at the entire transportation system and be able to see around corners, no pun intended, as to where those traffic problems lie in the future and how we cannot be caught flat-footed in the future and address those proactively, not responding to DOT solutions.
Thank you. And that, and that's a great idea. And I appreciate that explanation, because it's different a little bit than what I think of when I see evaluate the island-wide transportation system. Early on, when this became a focus, there was a lot of discussion around transportation systems and what we can do in terms of mass transit, what we could do in other regards. And so when I'm thinking about evaluate that, that's what I'm thinking about, is where do we put cars and bring people differently onto the island that would truly reduce the congestion and allow for the transportation needs of those coming and going? Where, where's that discussion or opportunity for us to evaluate that incorporated into, into the overall thought on this plan? Because, quite honestly, I know I go over this a few times and everybody's sick of hearing me say the same thing. But when you, when you boil it down, what we have on third, page thirty-eight is a savings and after we spend untold amounts of money, agreed, most of which have no idea where it's coming from. Big concern and red flag for me that it's coming somewhere down the line from our taxpayers on the island again. Not a fan of that and certainly a concern. But what we gain after we do all of this is we gain eight minutes, twelve minutes. And, and, and any, any, I mean, focus, concern, fluff about whether or not SC DOT's preferred alternative minute savings, time savings, different from what our local preferred concept would be, is A negligible, but B, none of it's impressive to begin with. What are we doing? Why are we doing this? The goal and the outcome and the cost and the dislocation just doesn't add up for me. Having said all of that, right? I want to turn on to something that I do find, and I could probably go on, but I would much rather be going on if I had somebody say, yeah, but Tammy, did you think? Because, because prove me wrong. Tell me what I'm missing. Add to the conversation and we're not doing that. But what I do want to say is that what I see in terms of the improvements on the island, the way the parkway is developed, the way our road systems work and function with the trails and the landscaping and the design is something that we ought to be doing anyway. The concept of driving onto this island and seeing what you've described or what's been described in these plans, I think is an enhancement that we ought to be considering and planning for anyway. The opportunity to come onto the island and be greeted by land that has such incredible historical and cultural significance should be highlighted. And there should be opportunities there for that community of the Goleguichis to be able to express their heritage, provide opportunity and draw people in. Yes, we have Mitchellville developing, but this is the place where you come on and you're first greeted. And I think that's an important element. So those parts of this, I'm a hun, a hundred percent behind. I hate to say a hundred percent, because you know I have comments along the way. But those are aspects that I think are really valuable to the community. And there was something that I had read, speaking of valuable, that we need a fair quantitative evaluation to help sort out their actual value. What I'm taking from that without getting dragged into into that, which I think is important, that is the actual value as I see it would be value in terms of cost. Right? What are we getting for all this money? But it also is the value to all of us as Hilton Head Island, Town of Hilton Head Island residents, our visitors, our businesses. What's the value to them? What's the value to each of us? What are we getting out of it? And right now, I see a big tax bill and opportunities if we, if we regardless of the bridge, enhance our roads and our communities in the ways that MKSK has developed for us to consider. The one thing going back to that number twelve question that I asked, evaluate the island wide transportation system. Besides what I mentioned is I want to make sure I'm heard really, really clearly. The idea of somewhere down the line, we push further and further into urbanizing this island and creating four lane side streets that come out into massive roads packed with traffic is, is as long as I'm here, whether I'm sitting in the seat or I'm sitting in an audience somewhere, you'll hear me raise a big no to anything like that. We are an island. And in case I, at this point, had a hard time with all of the unknowns. And the biggest unknown is what are the next steps? Whose hands does this land in and what happens from here? I, I need a better picture of that. So lots of questions, lots of things to think about. I really feel strongly that I wish that we were all around the table and we could have this conversation together in person. One other thing that comes to mind, it was brought up before and he said it that I don't see how we move without knowing is that we, the SCDOT has a hundred and whatever it is, seventy four comments. And we have no responses from them to those individuals. And it is important for us to know how SCODT is going to respond because then we know more about what they're thinking. We know about, more about what the, we know a little bit more about what they're thinking. So in any case, I'm going to let someone else talk. Thanks.
Mr. Lennox.
Thank you, John.
Okay, Tom. Tom, you're muted.
Bill might be kicking back.
Okay, Tom. You okay, Tom? Can you hear me?
Yes. Let me echo Tammy's comment about SCDOT's response to all the questions and comments that came in from the community. I think anything we do prospectively is going to have to consider DOT's response to those comments. But that being said, I have committed to getting a couple of questions from a local resident that has been very much involved in this process since the inception in front of, in front of Brian and his staff as well as Mark and town staff. I think one of them may well have been answered, at least in part, by Brian's presentation earlier this afternoon. The first question has to do with a stony overpass. And the question is, has there been a study of the design, feasibility, cost and level of service of a stony overpass option?
Councilman, I'll, I'll start that. We've taken in sketch plans that we have received, some ideas that we've received from some of the, of your constituents and have laid out a roadway and bridge crossings and tried to graphically articulate the very scheme that I think Mr. Sharp had articulated in his public comments earlier. There's, and, and we've determined that there is a fair amount of property impact to the traditional cultural property, which is all of stony. Whether it's privately held or town held, it's still covered and protected under the same restrictions or certainly the same covenants. So we, we've, we've looked at that in a, in a general sense. We were not charged with looking back and validating or poking at all the previous studies that DOT had done. They had done a number of them before they got to their, this preferred scheme. But we felt it important to take some of the constituents' comments, graphically portray it, understand what that meant to land impacts and then secondary roadways as they run through the stony community to interconnect. We felt it was invasive, but that is at a planning level that isn't at a preliminary engineering level. Again, somewhat outside the scope of both MKSK and HDR. What it does do though, it needs to be very sensitively handled such that we continue to satisfy the notion of a gateway onto the island. Safety is certainly a consideration of anything that we do and everything that we proposed, we feel strongly is safe. We also feel that moving traffic in the least amount of time from Moss Creek to the south end of the island isn't the only criteria by which we judge these scenarios. It's about the quality of the space, the sense of neighborhood, the, the light touch as much as possible of property take, especially through the stony neighborhood. That's been at the fore of our mind of we've explored those. So a long answer to a short question, we've looked at that as a, at a planning level and felt that overpass construction is costly. I think Mr. Sharp's scenario suggests that with that, that configuration, that two lanes in each direction would suffice versus the three lanes that DOT has suggested. I'm going to leave that to my engineering brethren to agree or disagree with that comment. But overhead construction, retaining walls, embankments, baggage roads to interconnect, those have got a cost in dollars and a cost in land, which we felt was invasive.
And, and Brian, as it pertains to two lanes, there continues to be discussion about DOT's growth projections as, as being overstated. And they go on to say, as a result of that overstatement, two lanes should be sufficient to handle future growth. Are you comfortable and confident in the testing that has been done on DOT's growth estimates?
Councilman, I don't have the technical expertise, but Graham and Philip do. They're the traffic engineers. I won't wade into those waters, but I'll let them answer that. That is technical.
Yes, Brian, we, we have looked at those several times. I think Graham had talked to, on this previously a little bit about looking at the long range model and, and the growth rate. I mean, we've looked at all that with respect to, there was a lot of talk with the one point one nine percent. And I think that's, that's very comparable, even if it was in that range, you know, twenty five, fifty percent less or twenty five, fifty percent more, it still would need more than two lanes in each direction. So yes, we feel very confident about that.
Well, thank you. Brian, you and your staff have been asked to enhance the Department of Transportation's preferred alternative. And to do that, I think you have effectively engaged the community. You've listened to concerns and recommendations from all. You've worked with DOT, HDR and professional land planners on your staff. And I think these elements that you have presented this afternoon effectively reflect all of that. And as was said earlier, we are only at the beginning of the process. And we all committed early on to this process. And I believe, I firmly believe that we need to continue the process. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Tom. Mr. Stanford?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to echo my colleagues' comments and thanks to the many people that have contributed to this, Brian, and to your team for the exhaustive work you've put into it. To HDR for the particular engineering expertise that has been shared with us. With support from the county, I appreciate Eric Greenway's participation in this. We will need his leadership and guidance moving forward. Most importantly, we're going to need the help of Tom Davis moving this forward. And Tom is committed to do that and has worked diligently on our behalf to move it forward. So what are we about here? To me, we were about evaluating the MKSK recommended changes and I would say improvements to the preferred alternative. The preferred alternative is not acceptable to me and I would not vote for it. But I see terrific refinements that have been achieved by Brian and his team to take away many of the impossibly rough edges of that. It was suggested early on that we consider the use of what I call the intelligent traffic signals. And I was told that they will move traffic efficiently. Frankly, I didn't believe it. So I said, where can I find it? And I was sent to Mount Pleasant. And I traveled down a six or seven mile segment that had eight traffic signals in it and very heavy traffic, and I only had to stop once. My non-scientific conclusion to that is that they work. And I believe that they will work to achieve the goals we have here. So that comes a long way in my mind to deal with the traffic signal that is recommended at, at Windmill Harbor. It's clear to me that trying to do a great separated intersection is just not feasible there. That's what my experts are telling me and I, and I have come to believe that. Now, the overall theme that has been recommended by MKSK for this segment of the corridor is to make it into a parkway. I salute that enthusiastically. I see improved medians. I see an effort to, in many areas, as I say, soften the edges. And that's exactly what we need so that we do have a meaningful entry experience into our wonderful community. Early on, I challenged the growth counts. And frankly, the statistics that you showed, Brian, having to do with that growth brings that question back to my mind. And that is we're seeing a declining rate of increase. Yes, over the early parts of the previous decade, we had enormous increase, but we're seeing a declining rate of increase. And so I'm going to ask longer term that we study that and have the expertise of the traffic engineers to tell us that in fact, we are reasonably going to expect a growth of an average of one point nine percent per year moving on till 2045. Now, when I saw the preferred alternative, I couldn't have been more dissatisfied. I had the exact opposite reaction to the MKSK plan. So I'm in support of moving the MKSK plan on through our friends in the county and on up to SCDOT enlisting the support of Tom Davis and others to achieve creating a parkway. I can look at the efforts that MKSK has put into stony. That's obviously been a prime focus of theirs because they recognize the sensitivity of that community. And I see response here to the sensitivity of that community, allowing them, for example, to continue to have guts. It seems to me it's going to be awfully dangerous getting on the road, but that's what our neighbors want. And so they'll have it until they realize that maybe that's not the best way for it to go, if in fact, they come to a different conclusion. But seeing the concepts of a, a park delegated to the Goleguichi community and history, that's extraordinary. That's exactly what this town is about. Recognizing our citizens, recognizing our history and making something beautiful. Overlaying that with the Development Corporation is a very creative notion. And I heartily support that as a way to really make that come true and be meaningful moving forward. Now, getting a little bit personal or local, I live in Hilton Head Plantation. So when I saw the preferred alternative showing driving all the way down to Spanish Wells and making a U-turn coming back to go to, go down Squire Pope, I said, that's close to insane. And so I challenged DOT about that. I said, do we have any of those types of intersections in this state? No, sir, we don't. Where can I see one? Well, I think there's one in Utah. That's not very helpful in making this decision. I asked if they attempted to use that type of intersection here in this state. And the answer was, yes, sir, five or six times. And since there are none here, I guess none of them were acceptable. He said, that is correct. So what MKSK has done is they've come back and by creating a two turn segment, a two turn signal, it would be an intelligence signal. They've eased the pressure of the light turning red. And I'm, I am confident that the experts are telling us that we will still have an adequate flow of traffic moving through that intersection. So on balance, I think that what MKSK has done is outstanding. I look forward to the opportunity for this to move, move forward, to see what the reaction of the county is. And hopefully the county will go along with these suggestions. I recognize that we have limited ability to control what happens outside of our town limits. I also recognize, by the way, that two seventy eight is a state highway. It is not a town road. So we have, again, limited control over that. But their policy is to listen to municipalities about state roads going through those municipalities. So I think that we have a great deal of power to control what happens within the town limits. Hopefully that would include out to Jenkins Island. I think we'll have less of an impact on the bridges, although I certainly agree with my colleagues' comments about the need to improve the appearance of those bridges and to make them as pleasing as possible. Sure, it'd be wonderful to have another bridge like Charleston does or like Savannah does. But folks, we're not going to get that here and I recognize that. But I do think we can put some lipstick on that pig and make it look much better. So my comments are that I think that we should in fact move this forward. If DOT says no, the MKSK recommend, recommendations, we're going to start all over from ground one, ground zero from my point of view. So that's where I am on this, Mr. Mayor. And I look forward to your comments on this as well. Thank you.
Well, I think MKSK did a wonderful, you got me? I think Brian and his crew did a wonderful job in getting us to the point where we are now. I would, I would ask the council to give us a seven, no, seven zero vote to give Eric and Mark the tools they need to go into negotiating with the DOT and its secretary tomorrow. There will be many more votes after this, but I would truly appreciate a seven nothing vote on this. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Brian, yes, David.
There is a policy recommendation regarding the master planning of Stony and the Development Corporation.
Yes.
Can we, can we add that as, uh, above the line as one of the recommendations?
Sure, why not? Unless, unless, yes, everything we want.
Thank you.
My understanding is that, that is part of the recommendations. Brian, Sean, Sean.
Yeah, that's correct. We just wanted to point out that it's not necessarily linked to the outcome of the transportation project. But, but they are important recommendations for consideration of council. Wants those included in the recommendations as they are and not differentiated the way we've done it in this presentation. We can do that.
Well, I wa- I want to emphasize that, uh, it is Senator Davis's opinion that there may be infrastructure money that would cede that nonprofit. So it's, it, it could very well be a part of the mitigation plan for Stony.
Uh, I'm, I'm okay with David's opinion. I think it should be in there, yes. Uh, let's, no more, we must call the vote, okay?
I haven't.
No, we never had long time now, let's call the vote.
Can I respectfully ask what the motion was, sir?
The motion was to accept the presentation by MKSK for Mark to bring to the joint meeting with the county and the state.
Yes, is that what you recommend? Someone make the motion as?
Yeah, will someone make the motion, Bill?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. I, I, I would move that Mark Orlando, our town manager, share the MKSK report. Uh, and that report is understood, highlights in a very supportive way, the master plan of Stony as well as the creation of a development corporation for Stony. Uh, with, uh, that, that report be shared with Eric Greenway, his counterpart at Beaufort County, leading hopefully towards a joint presentation, parentheses, town in county, to the South Carolina Department of Transportation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a question. I, I have a question.
I really can't, I totally know, so can we vote?
Just one question.
Sure, then Tim, you have a question.
Good, good, David.
My, my, my question is Glenn made the statement that if this MKSK list of recommendations is rejected, we have the capability of going back to ground zero, so to speak. That was, those were Glenn's words.
Yes.
Is that, is that accurate?
Good. Mr. Ames, um, Mr. Stanford, I, I would say our, our work's not done. What I applaud you all for, for doing or trying to do is collectively let me know what to talk to the Department of Transportation about formally. Um, and so I, I suggest that your recommendations, Mr. Mr. Brown brought up, you know, we haven't decided what's negotiable or not. My, my clear understanding is that as you make your recommendations, it's the full menu. And by no means am I looking at this as a negotiation with Secretary Hall, um, with, with Mr. Greenway involved. But I'm going to go work with the, with, with Secretary Christie Hall as well as Craig and, and a big appreciation for Craig along the way. So that DOT formally knows where we are to date, right? So this isn't the first and final vote. This is you letting me know formally collectively, or at least with your vote today. What I can confidently share with the Department of Transportation, what's your true sentiment? And so once I understand what that is and once I speak with the secretary, I will definitely bring this back to you. This isn't, this isn't the first and last.
Thank you, Mr. Orlando.
Jenny?
Well, thank you. Um, Mike, uh, so, um, trying not to react to being a little bit put off right now. The question I have is someone can answer for me? And if Mr. Greenway has any information, he's welcome to as well. How do we go? How do we go from where we started to where we are taking a vote without knowing what costs are, for one thing? But is it true that the outcome of all of this is a savings of at best 12 minutes? Is that the outcome? And, and I'm, and I, and I say that aside from my other comments with regard to the island-wide improvement plans that I, I think are valuable. Um, but in terms of everything else that's been discussed since the time the county, um, passed that on in November of 2017, is our outcome the savings of 12 minutes at best?
I, if I could jump in, I think that's one benefit that is being represented in the presentation today. If you look at the.
Is that the benefit that includes wording such as, um, increased capacity and reduced congestion is with all of that baked into it is at the end of the day, we're saving 12 minutes at particular times of the day. And, um, that's, that, that's a question I'd, I'd like him answered to.
Join. Yeah, so again, if we're looking just at the performance of a, of a no build of discontinued existing condition versus the SC DOT preferred alternative or our local preferred alternative, the travel time savings, that's, you're right, there, there is that, that increase. That is per vehicle, per day. There's a cumulative effect there. And I'm looking at this project as a whole. We still need to replace the bridge, an efficient bridge. There is benefit of having uniformity in the transportation system, have a 75-year lifespan with seismic control, breakdown lanes. Without the, I, I'm looking also without the project, we, we lose some opportunity for the enhancements that are being rec- recommended with this project. And so there, I think there's a lot of benefits from the recommendations that the team has put together. If we're looking at just, just at their performance and travel time, then yes, that, that's, my answer is yes, it's an eight or nine or 10 minute savings per vehicle, per day during peak hour. Um, well, twice a day, right, AM and PM. And so, um, i- if, if that's the only thing we're looking at from travel time performance, then yes. But I think there's many other benefits that are part of this. Um, the integration of that smart signal technology, um, that wasn't built into that travel time delay evaluation because they're comparing apples to apples. There are other benefits that would result and, and there's other benefits that we'll still have a discussion on. Uh, we've got short-term and we've got longer-term recommendations that still can come into play as we move into these next phases. So I think the benefits are much more than just the travel time savings, um, um, through the Stony corridor.
And so the original purpose of the penny tax vote, um, has now grown and warped a bit.
Well, if I could jump in just briefly on that, without delaying the meeting too much longer, the ask to the, to the citizens within Beaufort County, that was supplemental funding. There was already some funding in place for bridge replacement, the efficient bridge. There was this collective effort, effort to go, to apply to the state infrastructure bank. And so the 80 million was, um, additional supplemental funding needed at the local level. Uh, knowing that the, the original estimate was in a $240 million range. So it wasn't just this, it, it was, um, wasn't to solve the whole project and fund the whole project, just a portion thereof, about one-third of the estimated cost at that time.
Right, so now we're in a position where we're moving forward to, uh, with these recommendations that were so, that were developed that, that are beautiful and desirable. And, um, an outcome that I don't necessarily thinks, um, I think was the outcome that people were anticipating seeing when they took a vote. And moreover, the recommendations we're making, we have no certainty that we're getting, um, we're getting, these start at Moss Creek. We, which really creates the corridor gateway entry. Um, we haven't talked about who's thinking about what sort of spans or what this bridge would look like. Um, we were driving somewhere recently and I mentioned, and I'm, and I realized that there are some people who want to get off this call and get on with something else. But, um, this is a really big decision. I think it behoves us to make, uh, a little bit of time to think some things through. But we haven't talked about those types of, um, issues. And, uh, driving across a bridge recently, I made the comment to my husband that, oh, this is the type of bridge that some people have suggested we need coming on to Hilton Head. And he looked at me with curiosity and says, but we have a height limit on what happens on Hilton Head. And those spanses will certainly far exceed any building height we have on Hilton Head. It certainly takes away from the, uh, Frasier thought process. It certainly takes away from the natural beauty that was given to us by the creator of this island and these properties all around the waters, et cetera. So there's so much more here that we haven't talked about. And so, you know, I think we need to do that. We're, we're a step ahead of ourselves. We've already said, go ahead, do everything you want with the bridge. And, you know, we hope that, and that you go along with us with some of these other ideas. And we don't know exactly where all the money's coming from. And our taxpayers who are now overburdened are looking at grand plans, but no idea what's coming down the road for them. I have more questions than answers. I understand, um, a lot of what's been suggested here, that we're not experts. Um, but I have to be thoughtful about something. And this is the way I'm framing it. And if anyone wants to get together with me and prove me wrong, tell me what else I'm missing. I'm happy to do that. Um, but we're just talking at each other right now.
I, I, I've got something, Mr. Mayor. Thank, thank you for, uh, uh, allowing us the opportunity to speak to the motion. SC DOT has had almost three years to work on this. And we're about an hour and a half into it. I understand that. But we need to be confident that we are taking the appropriate time to evaluate. And I'll say it again, Brian and his team has done an excellent job. When we start to talk about the quality of life, quality, let's remember now, the original purpose statement from SC DOT had nothing to do with quality and only quantity, which was to increase the capacity onto Hilton Head. So, yeah, uh, $80 million into fixing the bridge and some enhancements. That's what the voters were looking at during the referendum. But if we are asking ourselves the question about quality for the additional monies that it's going to take to accomplish this project, let's just use one. We know that we have a workforce issue on Hilton Head. For the balance of whatever we exceed from that $80 million, are we going to get the return on that investment that leads towards a better quality of life for us on Hilton Head when it comes to that one aspect as far as workforce is concerned? We haven't even discussed that. That's a big component of our decision. And I'm not sure that that even falls within Brian's scope as far as a land planning organization, right? So, again, at this point, there are too many unanswered questions. We're not able to respond to the community as far as the needs. We are simply focusing on what SC DOT has put in front of us and can we make it better by putting lipstick on the pig? And I'm not sure that that's, that's what we signed up for. Those are my comments.
We don't came out fully vote? Kristin?
Yes, sir. Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Harkins? You said yes, Mr. Harkins, yes.
Check your head on. Okay, so.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mrs. Becker?
Jenny, you, you on?
Yeah. No, I'm on. Um, no, I, I just said reluctantly, no.
Okay.
Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Stanford?
Yes.
Mayor McCann?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Carry five two. Thank you very much, Kevin, motion to adjourn.
Sure. Motion to adjourn.
Second, both favorites are ready. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mayor, Council.